Okay. Everybody's ready? Okay. I call this meeting to order. Please rise to the flag.
I give allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming here this evening for our April 27th Linden School Board Meeting. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and January 19, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. This is a no smoking area. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Will you call it?
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada-Casada. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron. Sir Dela Cruz.
Here.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Here. Our next agenda item would be approval of the minutes. Make motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Now, this is a part of the meeting I truly enjoy, hearing from the public. Now, this is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raised your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on topics, on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, Linden High School Social Studies teacher, LEA president. I'd like to speak quickly on Finance Report Number 30.
Page 54.
On page 54. The staff in this district have been through a tremendous amount of change in the past three years. This change to shift to the School Employee Health Benefits Plan, while it may be cost-saving, is yet another change for us to weather. I have a few quick questions about it. Can the Board please explain the thought process behind this shift? If this is passed tonight, what steps are being taken by the district to ensure that the coverage complies with our negotiated agreement? If it is not in compliance, the association is looking forward to bargaining impact as this is a change to the terms and conditions of our employment. Looking forward to the district's response.
We're not going to discuss, as you know, Rob, we're not going to discuss contractual issues out here in the open, but we're happy to sit down, as always, with the LEA. Whenever you have issues, you know that you can always email Dr. Tomasic or myself, and we'll sit down right away and answer all of your questions in the appropriate forum.
Okay, so then could you please, I believe I asked a question that was not in terms, that did not have to do with the agreement, was about the thought process and the process behind this decision.
The thought process behind the switch.
As to why we didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see how that's productive in this setting. We've had a number of conversations privately, and I think you understand the reason for that. I don't think it's productive to any future negotiations that we have, or negotiations that we've already had on this subject, to discuss rationale and reasoning out in open today.
Then I look forward to sitting down with you guys shortly. Thank you.
Good evening. I know that once I finish this letter, you will thank me, I will sit down, but I encourage you to please hear and listen to what I'm about to say. This letter is to inform the Linden Board of Education that as of August 1st, 2023, I will be retiring from the Linden Public School District. Although I am very excited to start this new chapter in my life, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I will miss the many true friends that I made along the way. It's hard to believe that I have worked for the district for 23 years. Over that time, I worked with six principals and four superintendents. To say the last few years have been a roller coaster is an understatement. More recently, I feel the district is turning away from the values and morals I once felt they stood for. Mixing the City of Linden business with the Linden Board of Education business, in my opinion, has started the downward spiral of the Linden Board of Education and is unethical. Month after month, you invite your employees to stand up here and voice concerns or disappointments with what is going on, and nothing seems to change. Nobody seems to listen. When an employee who has worked for the district for 23 years and decides to leave before completing 25 years, is no one curious? Does anyone want to know why? I urge you to find out. Talk to employees that have been here for years and ask them why they are leaving. Ask new employees who have only worked for the district for a short period of time why they are leaving. I'm sure you may be surprised by some of their answers. I personally have experienced an issue over two years ago, and the issue was never resolved, and not through my own fault. I tried and tried and tried again for answers that were never given to me, or they just didn't want to give me those answers because the answers are there. Please don't allow this to happen to someone else. Was it overwhelming? Yes. Did it give me anxiety? Yes. Did I lose sleep? Yes, but I got through it, and yes, it made me a stronger person. I understand that not every issue is fixable, and not everyone will be happy with the outcome of those that are. However, it is extremely disheartening to feel that an issue as sensitive as mine wasn't even tried to be resolved. As I read the board minutes each month, it is disturbing to see how many seasoned as well as new employees are leaving the district for the same reasons. I urge you all to take a good look as to what is going on in this district and make changes now before it is too late. We have already lost too many good employees. With all due respect, maybe you should spend more time debating why employees are leaving the district instead of debating whether you want hard copies or electronic copies of your agendas, or why students are wearing pajama bottoms to school. I can tell you now, it is not for a lack of consequences. They are handed out at Seoul. But when students' responses to these consequences are, "I'd rather spend the day in ISS or rather be sent home," you can't pass the blame on administration. You need to look further. To Ms. Long, I would like to say thank you, thank you, thank you for accepting me into the arms of the Seoul family. You didn't judge me, you didn't listen to rumors, and you allowed me to prove myself to you and your faculty. After 22 years of service, which is what I had before I got transferred, to feel like you are starting from the beginning is something that I would not wish on anyone. After 22 years of dedication, it is inexcusable to have to be put in that situation. Rumors run amok in this district all the time. Nothing is ever kept confidential. Ms. Long did not listen to them, and for that, I will be forever grateful. Ms. Long has been there for me since day one, my principal, my mentor, and most importantly, my friend. I will miss you.
I want to take this moment to invite a teacher from Linden who wrote a book on gun violence. I would like it to share with the board.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Beverly Brewster. I'm a teacher at Linden High School, and also I am an author. I authored this book, Gun Violence, because of the spate of gun violence in our society today. We all are aware of the statistics. However, it's important to know that we cannot change legislation, however, we can change our approach. And in writing this book, I took into consideration the number of deaths and incidents of school shootings. As police officers constantly say, it's not unprecedented to see a gun falling out of a child's bag. And I wrote this book for parents, educators, and police officers to have that conversation, a conversation that seems difficult, because gun violence is the leading cause of death among young children. And it's time that we, as a citizen and an educated group, do something to prevent children from dying. I believe everyone in this room has children, and the last thing you would want to go to school, you send your children to school and hear them say, you know, "There was someone with a gun in school." Okay, so I'm going to pass the book around and give everyone the opportunity to look at it, to let everyone know it's available in bookstores throughout the nation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, pass the book so that we can all see it.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
If you don't have enough, I have one already.
Thank you.
You can give it to the board members so you don't run out.
He went online?
Online.
Anyone else have any other comments?
Oh, is it agenda items only?
Yeah, agenda items only, yes. Do we have anyone online?
No.
So then we are going to move to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like the Board to make one pen and ink change on the agenda. This is Personnel Item Number Three, the fifth row. I just would like you to make a pen and ink that when we vote tonight, the date should be 8/1/23 instead of 7/1/23. That's Personnel Number Three, Row Five. At this time, we need to hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 24 budget. On the agenda this evening is the approval of the fiscal year 24 budget to bring in our revenues and project our expenses for the next school year. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Business Administrator Board Secretary, John Sarapelia, who will walk us through the presentation, and then when he's done, Madam President, since that's a public hearing, we should have questions following the presentation just on that topic. Mr. Sarapelia?
Good evening, everybody. While the projector warms up, we do have a copy of at least the one page of the budget, if anyone wants to get it up there. It's by the agendas. As Dr. Tomasic spoke about, tonight is the final budget presentation, the public hearing of the 2023-24 school budget. This is the culmination of several months of work by my department, by the administration, by the Board of Education, and we're very excited to present it to you guys. So, for those of you who were here in March, you'll recall that we did a preliminary budget presentation. You'll notice that the presentation is very similar because there was not a lot of changes. At the time, we did a board approval, we submitted it down to the county. The county suggested two changes, nothing with dollar amounts, just where items were coded or where they were charged. We had to move tuitions to two different account codes, but it did not affect the overall budget, nor did it affect the taxes that we are going to be looking to collect for the 23-24 school year. We made those revisions, county signed off on it, and we are now presenting the budget tonight. So before we get into the nitty-gritty of the budget itself, we're going to give you a macro view of really the guiding principles of the budget formation. School budget is about the priorities for our students. We want it to be about their children, be about the children and their goals, but it is very much about money. With the budget that we're presenting tonight, you'll see that we're balancing a lot of different items. We're going to be balancing what we need for the students, what the taxpayers can bear, items that we need within the school itself, and, as you can see, we have two simple rules that we live by when we're putting together a budget. Revenues must equal expenses, and taxes cannot exceed the budgetary cap restrictions. One thing that I always like to stress is that we are putting together a budget now for expenses that were not going to be occurring for another 12 to sometimes 15 months. So we are doing our best, but the budget is still our best guess for what the expenses are going to be for the 23-24 school year. So now let's get on to the budget itself and how the Linden budget was formed. So the Board of Education gave the school administration direction. We reviewed all the budget lines, every single line that is made up of a budget we were going through. We looked at a five-year history of spending within the line. It's important that you understand we're looking at the spending, not what's been budgeted previously. The school administration itself, along with the Board of Ed, advocated for funding for the school formula. For those of you who don't know, the funding formula is the state's calculation of how much aid every school district in the state of New Jersey receives. The Linden Board of Ed has been historically underfunded. The state has been making it up over the last couple of years, but we really did, the school administration and the Board of Ed pushed for really getting full funding. We're not there just yet, but this year was a very big step towards achieving that goal. We did receive an additional $7.9 million, more in state aid for the general fund, and we received an additional $3 million in preschool aid from '22 to '23. We also held to a doctrine of no additional positions to the budget. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're not going to be creating new positions, it's just that the overall count, we're not looking to increase the number of positions that we have. All this resulted in a reduction in taxes of $2 million for the 23-24 school year. But with that reduction, we were still able to improve facilities, continue our one-to-one initiative, expand the preschool and ESL programs, and we also were able to enhance programs such as the Kane Scholar Expansion, middle school track, and freshman boys volleyball expanded. So how were we able to achieve that? Well, one area was, as I spoke about, an increase in state aid, and that increase is on that first line on the equalization aid. From '21-'22 all the way to '23-'24, you can see we are up about $14 million in the equalization lines. Transportation aid, special education aid, security aid has pretty much held flat. Extraordinary aid is an application that we do from year to year. We are not guaranteed that money, although we typically do receive it. So for '23-'24, for fiscal responsibility, we're actually budgeting it at zero, although we do anticipate receiving something for that during the 23-24 school year. Overall, our total general fund is up about $7 million, as I spoke about, seven, you know, right about $7 million. Our preschool aid is up, as I spoke about before, nearly $3 million. So overall, we're up over $10 million in aid. So what this resulted in is a bigger slice of the pie coming from state aid and a less of a slice of the pie of our total revenues coming from the, or rather, coming from the taxpayers of Linden. You know, we're up to about 30% now on state aid. State and federal grants is about 10%. General fund is dipping down towards 50%, and our budgeted fund balance is at 7.93%. And then we have a couple of other areas that are, you know, less than 1% that make up our budget. So again, let's talk about the budget implications. We were able to reduce taxes by $2 million. We were able to expand our preschool program, expand the number of classes that we're going to be offering preschool to. We've expanded our ESL to reflect the needs of the district. We do have an increasing ESL population. Again, as I spoke about, we're continuing with one-to-one. All of our students will have Chromebook or a MacBook within the school. We're continuing with the free summer school for remedial and enrichment learning programs. Money's being invested in security, as well as to fund the maintenance of the buildings and renovations to the buildings, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And like I said before, we're looking at enhanced programs, you know, middle school track program, freshman boys volleyball, and expansion of our Kane Scholar Program. The next area, we spoke about the revenues, where's that money going? And this is really, you know, the pie chart that speaks to where our expenses are. Regular instruction makes up about 26.56% of the budget. Tuition, including charter, is 6%. Special education, 6.5%. Employee benefits, 16.78%. State and federal grants, again, 10.21%. And capital outlay, 5.74%. And we'll get into more of those details in a little bit. So these categories are actually part of that one-page budget sheet, and we're going to kind of give you an overview of what's been going on, or rather, what is going to be going on in the 23-24 budget year. It's important to note that some lines show decreases. This isn't necessarily that we're expecting to, you know, spend less. It's actually reflecting what we have been spending in regards to the history. So don't think necessarily that there's any cuts here, more along the lines of if a line was budgeted high for three or four years in a row, we said, "Listen, we're not going to be doing that anymore." That's not an efficient use of our money. So, you know, for instance, you'll see summer school and co-curricular is down, you know, 10% in summer school. Co-curricular is down significantly. We're not cutting anything within those programs, we're just making sure that the budget reflects what our actual expenditures are. As I spoke about before, we are increasing costs, or rather, increasing spending within our bilingual education program. This is going directly towards teachers that we need for, like I spoke about before, we are seeing an increase in our ESL population. So we are, you know, we're attacking that problem head-on. We are setting money aside to handle that. Again, we have money set aside for our athletics, our AOE, our regular program. You know, it's basically somewhat flat. Basic skills, remedial, again, down, you know, $34,000, you know, 33%. But again, not necessarily cut within those lines themselves. Tuition, we do have up about $678,000. It's an 8.8% increase. You know, that's really due to, you know, anticipated or potential placements during the 23-24 school year. We want to make sure that we have enough dollars there, just in case we do have students that are placed. We don't want to have to take from somewhere else or reduce somewhere else within the budget itself. Next set of categories is our special education, again, our special ed numbers. Our costs are going up because some of our needs are going up in that area. Student support services, health and attendance is up slightly, 3.6%. Our speech and extraordinary services, up 6.3%. Again, this is representing the needs of the district, and the money is following where the needs are within the district. One area that you see a significant increase is in the child study team area. It's about a 38% increase, again, and it's a budgeting area. There were costs that were budgeted within Fund 20, which is an IDEA grant. The IDEA grant is going to be going towards out-of-district tuition costs. The reason for that is money that is set aside for salaries within the IDEA grant has to have a refund back to the state of New Jersey. We want to make sure all the money that we're receiving is going towards our expenditures, nothing going back to the state of New Jersey. So we've reallocated where expenditures are. So we had to move out those salaries that were previously budgeted somewhere else. They moved into the child study team area. So again, it's not necessarily an increase or a significant increase in personnel, it's just a different area where things are being budgeted. Library media is down $190,000. Again, this is not representative of any cuts there, just representative of where spending has been over the last several years. As you can see, in our operations, our maintenance costs are up, you know, significantly. This is due towards, again, some areas where there was items budgeted somewhere else. This also represents personnel that is needed within the district and expenditures for needed maintenance. Security is up. Security is up. This is due to, in part, due to a position that we're looking to add at the high school, as well as additional investments within our security program. Finally, we get on to the last sections of our budget comparison report, which speaks about the general administration. We actually are having a reduction on our general admin cost. School administration is up slightly. Again, that's really due to contracted salary increases. Technology costs are up. That's due in part to positions that were added during the course of the '22-'23 year, as well as additional spending that we have for services and supplies. Transportation, again, this is an area, if anyone's been following the news, transportation costs have been going up across the state, especially in regards to school districts. Quite simply, there's not enough bus drivers are out there. So, when you have a large, still relatively large, need and less people supplying it, the costs do go up. We are confident in our ability to bust all the students through, you know, through our budget, but again, we want to make sure that we have enough funds for it. As we are going to be talking about later, we do have money set aside for employee benefits. We do have a significant increase in those lines, which is representative from our quotes that we've received from our insurance agent, as well as potential hires that we have budgeted for in the '23-'24 budget. Capital projects, overall, is up 80%, and really, this is due to a shift in money. We had about $8 million set aside in the '22-'23 budget for a specific project that never came to fruition. We've already started getting pricing, reaching out to vendors, and if the Board approves this budget tonight, at our May meeting, we were going to have a lot of approvals to spend down some of those monies. And we're going to talk about, again, in the next couple of slides, what those capital projects look like. We do have money set aside for equipment. Again, we're going to talk about some of those investments, but it's technology investments, it's investments in vehicles, and it's, you know, really, a lot of investments for the facilities itself. We do have money set aside for capital reserve, as well as interest on our emergency reserve. The Fund 20, you'll see a reduction here. This is really something that the state of New Jersey asks us to do. They say to budget at 85% for some of the federal funds, because the federal government can't go below that number, but nine times out of 10, we're going to receive funding similar to what we received in the year before. So, overall, you can see that our budget is going up 2.9%, an increase of $5 million. I don't want to read through all of these, but we do have personnel changes. We have 15 new positions in the budget, 13 of which have an offset from the current '22-'23 budget, and the other two positions are separately funded. You know, we have things like a school ESL teacher. It's currently posted. There's an offset, for instance, of a kindergarten co-teacher, that a position that we haven't been able to fill during the course of the school year. So, this isn't necessarily, we're letting go of people. Again, there are positions within the budget that we haven't been able to fill. You know, we're going to be aggressively going out there, but just like I spoke about before with bus drivers, everyone will tell you too, we are having trouble getting teachers to fill the jobs that we have open. So, in regards to capital improvements, which is, you know, an area that I'm very much interested in, we are looking at doing roof work at Seoul and the ROTC building. We have gym floor work that we would like to do at School 2 and School 5. We're looking at rubber mulch, replacing the rubber mulch at a lot of the elementary schools. It's becoming torn up or coming displaced. We're looking at adding fencing for School 4 and School 10. We have a flagpole replacement or painting. We're getting pricing on that right now. That's going to be done throughout the district. We have ceiling tile work that we're looking at doing, as well as flooring work throughout the district, but with the flooring especially, there's going to be a focus in at the high In addition to bathroom renovations that we had budgeted for in this budget cycle in '22-'23, we're also going to be looking at renovations of bathrooms at School 2, School 6, and the high school. We're looking at installing new windows at School 6 cafeteria. HVAC work throughout the district, which is going to include boiler management. We're looking at new playgrounds at School 5, a new playground area at School 6. Gym padding, as you can see around the gym here, this gym does have padding. There are gyms within the district that do not. We're looking at adding padding there. We're looking at adding a new scoreboard for the football field, electronic marquees for all of the schools that do not currently have one, smart boards throughout the district. We did receive a lot of requests from principals and supervisors for smart boards. We're looking at new basketball backboards for the gymnasiums at School 5 and School 9. So, we're looking at doing all of these various improvements, adding staff, addressing the issues that we have within the district. We are doing all of that with a reduction, as I spoke about, of $2 million, so that, how's that play out to the average taxpayer? The proposed tax levy impact on $100,000 of assessed valuation is a reduction in your taxes of $40.36. So, on the average assessed home, which in Linden is $133,140, and it's important to note, it's the average assessed value. It's not necessarily your selling value. Your tax bill is actually going to be going down $53.73. Now, I want to note that changes can still occur. The Board still has the option of making changes tonight, although after you vote on this budget, it is going to become the operating budget for '23-'24. But, you know, changes still can occur if we need to make transfers, if we do receive additional monies, like in the forms of grants or whatnot, but this would be our budget that we will be taking going forward. And we are, like I spoke about, at the next board meeting, if the Board chooses to go ahead with this and approves the capital projects, we, you know, I think we're going to have 15 or 20 resolutions, speaking to a lot of those items that we just talked about on the last previous slide. So, that's the end of the presentation. You know, if the Board has any questions, then we could certainly turn it over to the public, as Dr. Tomazik said.
Mr. Serapilia, I just wanted, there was just one slip in there. You had said during the one-to-one computer initiative that the students would either have a MacBook Air, and you said Chromebooks, but I just wanted to correct that the eighth grade in Milo has iPads, not Chromebooks.
I just want to say thank you for going through all of that. It's amazing. From when I first came here, and we had this huge list of "we wants," and "we want our children to be safe," and "we want," you know, the bridge for the high school, even just looking into the bridge and getting that done is huge, is huge. I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
AC, air conditioning units, is also huge. That's huge. Those are the things that I wanted when I came here. I said, if we do nothing else, if the great things that we can do, right, lower taxes, right, air conditioning in the schools, the bathrooms, and that overpass, to put an overpass over this highway. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and the HVAC that she's referencing is actually in another grant that the district had applied for a couple of years ago. So, that is going to be something that's going to be starting during the '23-'24. It's not actually involving $23-24 dollar numbers, or rather, budget numbers, but it is also something that's on our radar of, you know, the list of items that we need to do.
So, how many schools would we be bringing each back to?
We're looking at doing four additional schools. School 4, School, I think it's School 4, School 8, School 9, and School 10.
Very good. So, we will be able to support our summer school programs?
Yes.
Very well. And so, I see that you're doing a lot of construction, right?
Yes.
And I see that you're doing a lot of the bathrooms and a lot of the classrooms, and we really need it. I hope you're doing some of the bathrooms in School 1.
Yes. No, that was actually in this year's budget. Again, it's, there was, in the '22- '23 budget, you had School 1 bathrooms in there. You know, just given the timing of it, you know, I was able, we were able to go out to bid on it. The bid's actually going to be opened and awarded in June, and then the work would be done over the summer.
But some of the expansion that would be going on in Schools Number 6, is that included in?
No, this is, it's, and we've talked about it with the architect. One of the areas that I think we had spoken about is certainly looking at the demographic study to see what the population would be there, but I think we're going to take the '23-'24 school year to prep for a future expansion there. You know, discussions with the administration, the Board of Education, and the community would certainly occur in the first half of '23-'24, with the intent of being in the '24-'25 budget. If we're seeing that we have that need there and everyone's in agreement, that we would be looking to make that as part of our budget.
Because I remember, Sam, when I first joined this board, one of your pet peeves was the trailers, wanted classrooms.
Dr. Berghammer, we can't hear you over here.
Oh, yes. Can I?
Yeah.
These trailers are so heavy.
Yes. One of the, one of the, your concerns was the trailers at School 6, and I know that we are really seriously thinking right now of converting them into building space and classrooms. So, I think that, I am amazed that the work of schools are actually starting to see some improvements. We get in toilets, we get in buildings. I'm very, very pleased.
Yeah, and we, you know, we did actually talk about that at our Finance and Buildings and Ground Committee last week, and I think that's going to be, it's not so much that we're not going to do expansion, it's how much, I think, is what the consensus was of the committee, you know, whether we want to do two floors or, you know, how the setup would be in there in regards to, you know, where the parking would be, things like that. So, it's, and on top of it, and I think the architect sort of spoke to this, is it's a very long approval process, simply because we're talking about educational space. It's not, you know, the, you know, doing bathrooms, the state is okay with, because it's not necessarily touching education. When you, when you start dealing with education, the state, they kind of get big brotherish, and they want to see exactly what it is you're doing, whether you're not, you know, what's going to be going into the space, and certainly with expansion, they want to make sure there's a need for it.
You also mentioned that we were getting, we get $7.9 million more dollars because of our ESL program.
Well, it's tied into the ESL, yes.
And that is, this is one reason why we were able to level off in our taxes and not have a tax increase?
Yes. And, and we've, you know, we've, Dr. Tomazik and myself have spoken about, because while we're putting together this year's budget, we also have to have an eye on future year budgets. We do anticipate, because like I said, we're not at full funding yet from the state of New Jersey, so we do anticipate in the '24-'25 school year having an additional increase. We should get that, you know, again, we'll all be advocating, you know, during the next budget cycle for that funding, but that's why we were very comfortable making the recommendation to the Board for a tax cut.
So, what are we doing differently, or what could we do differently so that we could get full funding?
Well, I don't.
Let me answer that. The Senate Bill S2, which was passed in 2018, made a seven-year commitment that the, all districts would be at full state funding by fiscal year '25. Despite a lot of complaints around the state for those districts that were previously overfunded and the monies being redistributed to those who are underfunded, like Linden, plus the state is having to kick in more money each year because their own responsibilities were underfunded. We should, they should see, if they follow the law, that next year we should be fully funded. The following year, fiscal year '26, is when the district might face a bit of a difficult decision, because we've been able to offset that, you know, during the times that we were underfunded, this Board of Education made up that difference by overtaxing the levy. So, now that we're getting to the point where we have every state dollar that we're owed, and then we should in fiscal year '25, in the following year, we're only going to get what we're owed. So, if all of a sudden, we have 3% increases in expenses, then we're faced with a decision at that point as to whether we reduce expenses to cover the increase that we need, or whether we go back to raising levy taxes. So, I think that when Mr. Serapilia said we had an eye for future work, we don't want to overspend just because we're getting more state aid, just to find ourselves in two years' time in some very, very difficult positions. We are spending about $11 million more than the state says that we should for our district, so we're overspending in that regard. So, we do have to control ourselves so that we're not facing difficult decisions, either a tax increase or uncomfortable cuts in two years' time, just to balance the budget.
Could you give me, I, you know, I am not good at math, so when you say we are not fully funded, could you, is there a dollar amount or some sort of, I don't understand?
I can only give it to you in a point in time.
Yes.
Every year, in October 15th, we have to count the students in the district. It's the official count, and we have to say what type of students they are, because we get more money from, in state aid, if a student is an ESL student, if a special education student, or a regular student. So, our state aid every year could be something different, depending on what our October 15th count is, and that count is called the ASSA, or the Application for State School Aid. Once we submit that count in October 15th, in February, when the governor announces the budget, they use those numbers to drive what state aid we're going to get. So, this year, we got $7.9 million. It was more than we thought, because we hadn't factored in, we had more than 100-plus new students on October 15th this year than we did the previous year. So, they're paying us for those students. If, in fact, we experienced a reduction in students, we're going to get less state aid, and maybe we would just be just right if that happened. So, I can't tell you with certainty what it's going to be like next year, because I don't know what the enrollment count's going to be, but we do know that over the last year, we had a 25% increase in ESL students, and we had a 34% increase of ESL students over two years. So, unless that's going to come to an abrupt halt, then the likelihood is that it's going to continue to some degree. So, I can't give you the number, because it's variable every year, but certainly, we're getting to the point where we're getting very close to being just about where we should be, instead of million dollars, millions of dollars short from the state.
Well, one of the things concerns me right now is that right now, we are overspending by $11 million, and if we don't find a way to become more fiscally responsible by 2026, our real estate taxes could increase. So, we really need to take a look at our spending. We need to look at where we could make cuts so that we don't have to, taxpayers in Linden don't have to suffer from high increase of taxes, because we are spending, you know, our spending continue to increase.
We did, this year, follow a philosophy to offset positions without making anybody a reduction in force. So, I think it's a good policy that is where we can find savings here, there, as it doesn't mean that we have to send a good employee out the door, that that's probably a good policy to follow, but you have to do that consistently over time, and you don't want to overspend and then have to send somebody, because later on, you have to make a cut. So, we were pleased that besides covering our needs and returning $2 million to the taxpayers, that we didn't have to do a taxpayers, that we didn't have to do any reductions in force either, but that takes every, that's an attention every day type of issue which will continue to follow.
Anyone have any more questions?
I do. I have a, with transportation. Is our transportation company, say they're having a hard time hiring bus drivers, are they meeting our expectations? And can they continue meeting our expectations?
Well, we have several companies that do provide our transportation. The main company has, has been able to meet our needs. We have, we have a couple of routes that weren't able to be renewed at the CPI number, the number that the state of New Jersey allows bus companies renew at. They were mostly ESY routes with one additional route, but the routes that we have going on this year have all been, we haven't had issues with them.
Okay, the reason why I ask, because once again, we went through COVID where they weren't providing anything, because there was no students in school, we kept our payments up to par.
Yes.
They came back the next year, because obviously costs went up, they came back and said, we need more money from you guys, even though we kept you afloat when you weren't doing anything. So for me, that's not a win-win situation. And then we had one company that said, fine, we can deal with this increase, and we're not going to increase, but then after they saw we approved everybody's increase, they came back and said, now I want the increase, because, so that's bad business for me, so.
And, and I'll tell you, it's not just everybody, every district, and we've had meetings, you know, across the county, where we've had this exact issue being brought up. I mean, transportation has become a very big issue for the state of New Jersey. Like I spoke about, there's, there's not bus driver, there's not bus drivers for the bus companies, there's also not bus drivers if you wanted to privatize it and, and do it yourselves. I'm hearing, you know, there's, you know, six months to a year wait on buses themselves to purchase, and if you wanted to get an EV bus, I think it's even a longer wait time on it. It's just, you know, the, you know, supply chain, you know, everything that was related to COVID beforehand, and, and it just seems that it's been magnified since then. So, we, like I said, we're, we are, you know, diligent about it, but like I said, we, you know, in, in listening to some of the, the other districts in the county, it's, it's really scary about what, you know, they're being forced to do. You know, I mean, I've, I've heard of some districts having, you know, teachers have to, you know, or getting their CDLs just to do routes after school hours, you know, for things like that, because it's just, not that I'm suggesting it, but, but just from the fact that they, they, they literally just can't find drivers anywhere.
Okay.
I remember once we were talking about shared services.
Yeah, I want to ask a question. Being that we have so much in the budget, why we have negative in the budget? Like with the library and the curriculum, if we're supposed to weigh it out, why is it always those parts there? I asked that before, and do you take the money to put it there, or how do we weigh it out? What do we need extra money to go there? Let's just say for the library.
Well, it's not so much, and again, it's not that we're necessarily taking money from there, it's money that hasn't been spent in those lines for a number of years. When we've looked at, at those lines, you know, whether it's in the supplies, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, we've been, we've been providing the funding for those certain areas, and it just hasn't been utilized. I think one of the areas was, with, I think it was in, within the salary lines itself, like, it seemed like there was an additional staffing that was supposed to be put there that never was, and it looks like it's been there for the last couple of years. When we put, again, when we put together the budget, we were looking back at the last couple of years, and if we're consistently seeing that an area is only spending, let's say twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, and, but the budget's always in that line for fifty thousand dollars, we're saying, well, why are we putting that money there that's not being spent when we can be putting it somewhere else? If, you know, that being said, if there is a request for, you know, certainly at, you know, the, at the budget time during the course of the year, as I spoke about previously, we can look to move the monies within those lines, but like I said, it's, it's not necessarily hurting the program, because it's never been that we've gotten to that level of spending within those lines.
So it's basically not a standstill?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's what we're, you know, we're looking at, and again, in terms of the way we put together the budget, you know, this comes from the bottom up, you know, we, it's, it's built line by line, we, we do allow, you know, we basically said to supervisors, to the principals, what is it that you need? You know, we give them a dollar amount, but we also say, you know, wish list items, what is it that you want, you know, staffing wise, what is it that you would like to add in there? And for the most part, you know, certainly we, we're sticking to that mantra of not, no new staff, but whenever we were able to add anybody in, you know, we certainly did, you know, especially given the fact that, like I said, we've, we've had some positions that, again, were budgeted in there, like I spoke about, like, you know, the co-teaching for kindergarten, you know, that was a position that has been budgeted, but nothing was spent in that line, so we said, we're not going to continue to keep that position when there's a need, for instance, for an ESL teacher. But again, it's, I don't, I don't want to ever think that we're hurting any of the programs, and if there's ever a need within those, within those areas, we certainly will address it.
That was a very good question, because that's one of the concerns I had, because it looked to me like some of the level, it was like it was some leveling off.
Yes.
Because there was a lot of inflation, you know, so what you level it off, so what you level it off?
Yeah, and like I said, it's not, it's more, like I said, it's, you know, if, and I don't want to speak about how anybody else did the budget previously, just the way that I've done it. I always look, I, I don't want to look at what was budgeted last year, or budgeted two years ago, only because that's not indicative of what's actually going on within the line. You know, you can budget a hundred thousand dollars in a line every year and only spend fifty on it, and that's not really good practice for the school district, because that's fifty thousand dollars that could be going somewhere else. It's not, I mean, and I'm not saying that, you know, you never had that need for that hundred thousand dollars in here, but if it's been, like I said, in, in certainly in some of these lines, where you look at it year in and year out, and there's no, you know, it's not reaching that level of spending, well, why aren't we taking that money and using it for something else within, in the budget? But again, like I said, it's, it's one of those areas where if the principals come back to me and say, hey, listen, we really have a need for this, you know, we certainly can look, you know, to moving the money there, especially as I said, when we get into the budget year.
There will be money there, if they say they need it, it will be there for them.
Yeah, listen, yeah, it might, you know, my philosophy isn't to ever say no, it's always to find a way to say yes, especially, like I said, when we're talking about for the students. You know, we, we will, you know, work crazy just to find, find ways to, you know, reduce costs so that we give you guys choices. And again, this is really what this budget is, is, we're hoping for, is to give you guys the choices that you need and, and accomplish the goals that we're speaking about.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. I learned a lot from this. One last question, do you guys, are you guys going to be, you know, I know you mentioned before some shared services, like we have lost some bus routes, and of course, shared purchases. Are we going to do shared transportation services, shared purchasing services, more shared, more shared services with different districts so that we could reduce cost?
I, I wouldn't say that. We're, we're not doing any shared services on transportation, we're contracting out for the service that's not shared. Where there's a shared service possible for something that if we do together with another entity and we can reduce our costs, then certainly we would entertain that, but we're currently not doing shared services with our transportation that I know of. There would be, the district I came from was doing shared services. We had an agreement that we were under the umbrella of another district's transportation, and they did all the things that Mr. Serapilia said, and we just benefited from it. But it was, it was an arrangement. Shared services only work well when there's really a benefit to it. It's not anytime you do shared services that it works. You could actually lose value on a bad shared services arrangement. So we have, we're very, very particular about that.
Well, and, and in regards to, you know, the Ed Services Commission, the, the contracting out for transportation, it's not in, in the traditional sense of a shared service, but we do look at, you know, and certainly when we're contracting with the county offices for the, the transportation, you know, we are looking at having, like I, I think I spoke about at the last meeting, having, if we have a student that's going out of district and our neighbor has somebody that's going to the same out of district, they will look to put them on the same bus. It's not your traditional sense of shared service, you know, because it's not an agreement between us and, let's say, you know, Clark or, or Rozelle, but we are kind of sharing the same bus route, you know, our students are going to be on the same bus, but we're really contracting with a, with a third party for it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
Two questions. With the capital project improvement, how much is put aside for that? I think, I believe you told us.
Yeah, it's.
Do you have a key? Look at you.
Oh, yeah, it's, thank you.
The capital is nine point two million.
Okay. And is there a guesstimate of how much it's going to cost for the pedestrian bridge crossing?
Well, that's, that's not necessarily in the, this budget number.
Just a guess, though, just.
I think, what did he say?
I don't think he was, he wasn't prepared to say, because he has to do that study first to get all the codes, so he'd have to design it, so he's going to produce an estimate for us, but it would just be very, very preliminary, and it isn't based on facts yet. So that's the purpose of that twenty-five thousand dollar study, is to first off, make sure it can be done, and then once he knows the parameters of what he would have to do, that would drive the costs, and he would probably look at the prevailing construction costs at the time before he gave us that reasonable estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone okay? Okay, so yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very, very, very good presentation.
Continuing with my report, sadly, as happens, we've had so many employees for years, and many come to the point of passing away. We have, two of our former employees have passed away. Christine Herbert started her career with the Linden Board of Education in nineteen ninety-six, and during her years, she taught at second grade at school number nine for over sixteen years, and she retired in two thousand and twelve. And also Kathleen Riley started working for the Linden Board of Education in two thousand and two. Kathleen worked as a paraprofessional at school number four until her retirement in two thousand and nineteen. And certainly on the behalf of the Linden School District, we offer our most heartfelt sympathies to their families. Our thoughts are with them and the family during this time. Generally, at this time of year, we have retirements, people who have done long and loyal service for the district, and we like to recognize them as well. Susan Blazowski has worked in the Linden Public Schools for the past twenty-four years as a paraprofessional and part-time school aide. Susan's worked at school eight since her first day here in Linden until now her retirement. Jaclyn DelGarcio started her career as a secretary in two thousand and three. She worked for the Supervisor of ESL and World Languages for about ten years, and right now she is currently the Secretary for the Principal of Linden High School. Thomas Donakis started his teaching career in nineteen ninety-three. He taught mathematics at Linden High School throughout. He's been a mathematics teacher coach at Soul Middle School, and he's currently teaching mathematics at Linden High School. Mary Ann Perazzoli started working for the Linden Board of Education as a secretary in two thousand and three. Mary Ann's worked at school nine for approximately eighteen years and is currently the school secretary at Soul Middle School. And lastly, Henry Strudzik started in two thousand and seven as a custodian at the Linden Board of Education, and throughout his thirteen-plus years, Henry worked at Soul Middle School and is currently a custodian at school number four. We thank all of you for your passion and dedication to the students and families of Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best, and please enjoy your retirement. Today was a special day in the district, because it was Take Your Child to Work Day. There were new children that we hadn't seen before all over the place. It was, I think, very special, because we could see the very reasons why many of our staff come to work and work so hard, because they're trying to provide for the children that they love, and it was nice to be able to see them here at least for one day. On district operations, we're very pleased to report that the Genesis Student Information System is now up in dual mode. It's working side by side with On Course. We are now starting the work of scheduling at the secondary school in the next year module of Genesis, and as we complete our work, it's a rollover date sometime in July, Genesis will be the online system. We also have been adjusting at the elementary school, the reality, as Mr. Serapilia has talked about, about this blast of new ESL students that we've been receiving. Quite literally, the model that we've been following in years past is inadequate to handle this number of students. In the past, we centered the ESL students at certain schools, and students would arrive in district and then have to transfer to those schools. Now that we're at the level of ESL students that we have now, it seems to be clearly obvious that the best solution is that every elementary school have an ESL program, so that as students come into the district, they could be placed immediately in the school that is going to serve them, and without disruption. As we've been following the program now, students come into the central registration, or they're placed in their home school, and then at some point, they're tested for their language ability, and then possibly, they're told, you know, you need ESL services, and if they happen to be at school number one or school number five, where there's no ESL program, then they have to switch schools just after starting school to go get their programs elsewhere. So our intent here is to work the elementary master schedule for next year, so that many, if not all, we're still working on the numbers, ESL students can actually be served in their home school, provided that they don't have a particular special need because of their language that has to be in another location. Coming up, we have state assessments next month. First off, the International Baccalaureate is starting their tests tomorrow, and they'll be going through May nineteenth. The Advanced Placement Test will be on May fifth, eighth, ninth, and thirteenth. And the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments in ELA, Math and Science, will be done at various times throughout the district, starting next Monday, May first, and continuing through May twenty-fifth. We spoke at the last work meeting about our graduation. We have an initiative this year that grows off of an initiative last year, which fell short of our expectations. Last year, we were very proud to put banners of our students around the city as they graduated, but we were only able to put up about forty of the banners, and since there's several hundred in the graduating class, if somebody didn't get a banner, they wondered why they didn't get a banner. So our solution this year is to show everybody at graduation who is graduating, and to do that, we have a big screen that's going to be at graduation, where all of the student photos will be cycled through, and everybody can see them, and we've been working very hard to come up with the equipment on scene that could do that, and also to prepare the equipment on scene that could do that and also to prepare the screen and the show that will go with it. So we continue to work on that. The, we're very pleased today to, once again, our music department has been designated as having Linden be one of the best communities for music education in America. This award given by the National Association of Music Merchants. We're very well done to that program. And most special, we've had quite an unusual event in that two of our educators, teacher Kim Kafalas and principal David Walker have been designated Apple Distinguished Educators. This is quite rare in New Jersey and certainly something that we're very, very proud of these two educators, that they're receiving this recognition. And we've already had visit from Edison Public Schools come to school 10 to see what they're doing and to learn of all their good work. So very, very proud of them. Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. A lot of good things are happening in Linden. Our next agenda item is our attorney report.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to be asking for a motion to approve item one on the attorney report. Item one, as discussed on Tuesday, will authorize the settlement of a grievance that was filed by the LEA against the district. We believe that this amicable resolution of the grievance is in both the boards and the LEA's best interest. So once again, I respectfully ask for a motion and a second to approve item one on the attorney report.
Motion to approve item one on the attorney's report. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Our next agenda item, the education report.
Education Committee upon recommendation interim superintendent of schools and assistant.
Come closer to the mic.
Education Committee upon recommendation interim superintendent of schools and assistant superintendent presents the following motions to Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve one through. 28. I'll get a second. Please to get a second, please.
Forty-eight. One through forty-eight.
One through forty-eight.
Oh, forty-eight?
Yeah.
I got twenty-eight. Yeah, forty-eight. I'm sorry. One through forty-eight. I'll get a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Next agenda item, personnel report.
Personnel Committee upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I respectfully request an approval for items one through forty-five.
Have a second? Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. The finance report.
The Finance Committee upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I request approval for items one through thirty-six. I respectfully ask for a second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Buildings and grounds?
The Buildings and Grounds and Security Committee upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I look for a second from number one through number nine.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
I would like to recuse myself from items five and eight. Yes to all other agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Our next agenda item, comments from the public. Our next agenda item, policy.
Planning and Policy Committee upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I respectfully ask for the approval of items one. Respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Okay, our next agenda item, comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on gender items for three minutes.
Good evening. Joanne Patavano, 629 Princeton Road. I did address the board on Tuesday's session. However, we have many more people in the audience today, so I'm going to repeat myself. As you know, on Tuesday, I mentioned how the Linden varsity softball team participated in the autism awareness tournament. And our girls had a great time. They didn't win, but I think I mentioned that the highlight was having an autistic child from school four throw out the first ball. And this little girl was adorable. Her parents were at the game with us. She was presented a softball, an autism T-shirt, a tiger visor, and had such a great time. And that, I think, meant more to the girls, our girls, than winning. The other thing that was really great, there were approximately, I believe I was told, about 20 softball teams that participated in the event. The Linden High School Girls Team collected the most donations of $1,848 and the girls were. I want to thank the board members that contributed. And I know there were some friends of ours in the audience that also gave money to our girls that were collecting it. So again, I really thank you for that. The girls just had such a great time. They're looking forward to doing it next year and the year after that and however long they can do it. The other thing, I just wanted to mention that next Thursday is our girls softball senior night. We have four seniors on the team and it's a special night for the girls. The parents get to walk them out to the field and it's just a special night for them. So if you are available, it is a home game and we hope to win that game. And it's at four o'clock down at the PAL field. So please, if you have the chance to come and see the girls, like I said, it's always that special game where the seniors every year. The other thing, Saturday at 2:30 is our Linden High School Tricky Tray. We have been working tirelessly. There are hundreds of baskets, great baskets. This is the only fundraiser the high school does and it benefits our junior, sophomore, and freshman class to lower costs for those children. Like I said, it's the only fundraiser. The ticket, if you buy it ahead of time, it's only $15. It's a fun time and we really encourage the public to come and support us. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Kim.
Thank you so much! I'll do this later. I'm gonna do this herself. All right. Good evening, board members, administration, and council. My name is Kim Kafalas. I am the technology teacher at schools eight and 10. And of course, I could not be happier to share with you that my professional dream has finally come true. And it only took 10 years. But please allow me to explain, and I apologize if I get emotional. I'm usually not, but this one will be and you'll hear why. In 2013, Linden decided to embark on a one-to-one technology initiative using Apple technology. I was teaching third grade at school 10 at the time and the principal chose me to send as a representative for this technology vanguard team. And they were going to have a meeting at the administration building in June of 2013. The room was filled with other teachers that were chosen and we were all eager to begin our journeys as a technology ambassador for our schools. Listening to the administration's outlines of the plans were so exciting and you could actually like feel it in the room. Everybody was so excited about this new adventure and what it was going to mean for our students. And then I heard the words that would constantly be echoed in the back of my head. Ms. Cleary said, you know, one day you can aspire to become an Apple Distinguished School or even one of you could be the first Apple Distinguished Educator. From that day on, I was like, this is my mission. This is what I'm gonna do. But as we all know, life has a very strange way of surprising us. And so this was June of 2013. So August of 2013, I was diagnosed with stage three breast cancer.
Oh, my Lord.
And I missed the entire school year. So October, all the way until September. It was, I missed the entire school year. It was the absolute worst time of my life. And although I was focused on beating cancer, I felt this huge sense of disappointment because I was not going to be able to fulfill something that I really wanted to do. So my dream of becoming an Apple Distinguished Educator just seemed completely impossible and it seemed like it would never happen. So, but my family, my husband's here, but my family would always remind me, and I know a lot of you don't know me, but those of you who do know, I don't use the word can't. I don't have the word can't. I don't know the word can't. And so I always did what I always do and I pushed forward, determined to come back stronger than ever. And it took me a long time, many treatments, multiple surgeries, and lots of therapy. But soon enough, it was time to get back to me. And in 2018, the job that I always wanted became available and I transitioned to an elementary technology teacher in an effort to incorporate technology concepts into the curriculum as well as enhance the students' experiences with computer science that they really weren't getting in the classroom. I contacted our Apple rep, Paul, and told him I was ready to apply for my Apple Distinguished Educator program. We sat down and to my disappointment, he felt as if I did not meet all the criteria to be selected. If you've ever seen the application for Apple Distinguished Educator, it's like, it's more documentation than if you're going to buy a house. So he said, you know what? You're close, but you're just not there yet. So however, in my true fashion, I said, well, I'm not leaving this meeting until I have a roadmap of what I need to do to one day get it. So we sat down and we created the roadmap and then come to find out that in 2018, not one person from New Jersey was selected. So I joked with Paul that they were just waiting for me. I followed the roadmap. I stayed focused. I worked hard. And when the applications opened this year for Apple Distinguished Educator, I was ready. I submitted all my documentation, crossed my fingers, and I was honored. I am honored to announce that I am one of only four people in New Jersey who have been accepted. What made the moment even better was finding out that my principal, David Walker, had also been accepted. And Linden has never, ever, Linden has never had an Apple Distinguished Educator before. And now, Mr. Walker and I will represent 50% of New Jersey at the Apple Distinguished Institute in Dallas, Texas this summer. This would not be possible without the amazing support from my technology supervisor, Joe Scaldino, who when I give him all these crazy ideas says, okay, I guess, just do it. And he is extremely supportive. As well as my wonderful principals, I have to shout out Dave Walker and Michelle Rodriguez. They also, when I go to them and say, I want to do this, they're like, okay. And I would also like to thank the Board of Education formally for approving all my requests for professional development and various events because it was on my roadmap. One of the things for Apple Distinguished Educator is you have to be an educator outside of your district. So you have to have that distinction outside of just where you are. So that's why it has always been important for me to go to those professional development sessions and then get to the point where I was actually presenting at those professional development sessions. So that was what really, I needed that to kind of fix that roadmap. So it has been a very emotional journey for me and I thank you for letting me share my backstory. And I hope I'm showing my students that you never give up and that hard work pays off. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dani Orlean Armstead. I have to say that I feel so proud to be a Linden educator. I feel proud to work in the city that I love. Kim, thank you for sharing your story. You're truly an inspiration. Not to give up, listening to what you had to endure. You never give up. You are a true role model for all the young people in Linden and I will make sure that you are honored at the next council meeting. I'll be talking to the mayor about you. Good job. It is really wonderful when I see people come to the podium and talk about all the positive things Linden has to offer. It's really wonderful. And at this time, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the LEA. Rob and, we had, the mayor's youth commission scholarship committee had their color run. We had an amazing time. Wasn't it fun? Yes, it was so much fun. The kids, they didn't want to leave. I had to tell them, you know, it's time to go. Your parents are waiting. They really had a wonderful time. And we didn't have the opportunity to publicize the event, but I'm sure next year it will be even, something even bigger. We had some of the board members who were able to participate as well. I would like to thank all of you for really showing the children of our town that there's so many people who care about them. So many. And on that note, May, we will have our Dine to Donate at Appleies again because the first one that we had was a major success. So every Monday in May, we'll be Dine to Donate for the class of 2023. For those For those of you who don't, don't know me, I'm also, not only an educator, but I'm also the chairwoman of the Mayor's Youth Commission Scholarship Committee. One of the things that I have to do is to raise money. And the money, money, the money raised goes towards scholarships and project graduations. And it costs over $30,000 a year to host project graduations. And Project Graduation, for those of you who don't know, it's a safe place for our graduating seniors to interact with one another. And it's really very sentimental for them because some of them will go away to school and they will never see each other. So it's really special. So this year, I would like to see more volunteers because we do, sometimes I see people come here, you know, they say they care about the kids. I would like to see some of those people volunteer at a project graduation. And thank you for, I'm so happy to work here. And Kim, once again, thank you for being an inspiration and I will, I'll keep in touch with you.
I'm very short, so I don't know if you guys could hear me. First and foremost, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for everything that you guys do.
Could you please tell us your name and address, please?
My name is Delugo. Address is 113 Lincoln Street. Some of you actually know me as Darlene or Brett's mom. Some of you actually know me as Wyatt and Nyleen's mom in school five. But I think a lot of Linden residents, along with Brianna and Dani, knows me as the 2020 and 2021 Easter Bunny driver, which was entirely so heartwarming to see everybody and especially that we were going through all of that. But I'm actually in front of you guys because my son, who is eight years old, has Asperger's and savant and he's very, very proud of it. And I know in the Linden schools, there is a lot of children with autism, whether they have been diagnosed or not. And I know that there's a lot of children in our houses that have autism. Either you know them, you're racing them, or you're teaching them. I don't believe that we have enough teachers aware of how to handle situations with children with autism. I, there are special teachers. It takes, 2020 honestly taught me, I can only be a mom. I can't be a teacher. Because honestly, I know by 10:30, I was looking at the tequila bottle because I couldn't, I couldn't do what you guys do. But, you know, all of you educators do, you know. It's incredible. But Wyatt being autistic, he gets into the yellow zone and then the red zone, which is when he starts self-harming. Sorry. And I don't think that a lot of teachers understand how to bring a child with autism down to a safe place. Especially that I've had to attempt to fight for an IEP for my son and I was denied multiple times. He has a 504. But with all that said, he's actually doing great at school five. But I believe that a little bit more of the budget and a little bit more attention should be actually given to children with autism. Not only teaching the teachers how to deal with children with autism, but also teaching the parent because we parents really don't know how to deal with it either. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you for listening to me. And once again, congratulations to the teachers and thank you so much, guys, for everything you do.
Hello, my name is Brianna Taylor. I live at 716 Carnegie Street. I just wanted to say congratulations. It's amazing, not just for the kids, as far as grownups too, because that's a great, great story. Wonderful.
Speaking Mike?
Sorry. So I came up today because my last time I was here, I had a great passion to bring soccer to the Linden community, to our kids. And through great encouragement, I ended up starting my own soccer club in the community, Linden United Soccer Club. So I just wanted to bring it out and try to spread the word. We have some programs that's starting up. We want to try to come into the school program, I mean, the school district and bring some of our high-level coaches, our A-licensed coaches, to do a free program with some of the younger kids, the kindergartners, the first graders. And we have some camps and clinics coming up for the younger ones between five to seven to introduce the game. And I hope that I can reach as many kids as possible. We're starting some league play in the fall and I just wanted to spread the word. So thank you so much for all the encouragement from so many board members. Like I said, I don't think I would have thought of doing it and it was brought to me and then I did it. And now I have something that's great and it's gonna build. And I can't wait to help and add value to these kids and really show them the game and the passion and the love and build them up to be good kids and adults later. So thank you so much for all the support and thank you.
Madam President, I'll just add on to Ms. Taylor's. They have an offer to come into school recess and the athletic director is in conversations with them to see if we can bring that to fruition next year. One of the initiatives, not all of them.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joaquin Del Carmen. I'm a resident of Linden for over 20 years, live at 618 Maple Avenue. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Kim Cofalas. She was the teacher of my three kids at school 10 and proudly I could say that they received a distinguished education. It's been many, many years since I know her. My kids are great and I cannot thank her anymore because of what she did for them. I also like to make it known that here in Linden, the sports that the kids are being provided to, the after-school programs, sometimes I find them unfair as many kids are being denied of practicing the sports that they love. No matter if they have played on previous years, at a point they can be told, oh, you cannot be part of a team. Something that I believe that is, that is killing the spirit of the sport. And not only that, he's telling the kids that they cannot do it. We all know that many of the great players that we have seen, that they started their careers at a very late age, age of 15. I'm a proud parent of a 13-year-old. He was told that he cannot play baseball. On two previous years, he played baseball and this year they told him, no, he cannot even practice with the kids. And I know that his funds for everything are here. And I know that you have after-school programs and you have also staff for them. But the more the merrier. And if you only got like 20 or 30 kids playing one sport, you're closing the doors to the rest. Is that a proper thing to do? And is it proper to say that you cannot play a sport, so go home and just sit in front of a computer and that's it for the day? I'm not expecting this to be solved for my child, but for anybody who has a child at an elementary school and they go to a middle school, where the program is being offered, you know, one day they might be facing that, oh, your son cannot play sports. He just can't go home and sit down in front of a computer because we don't want him to play sports. I don't know how they make the selection or how they make the decision of some kids could play and some others cannot. But when I grew up, if you wanted to play sports, you could go and play sports. And if we have a program and we funded a program through the money that I pay on taxes in the city, he should be able to play that sports. And we all know that playing sports help everyone to live a healthier life. And a healthier life meaning that, you know, keep you off the streets, form a good education, character, discipline. And all of that can be achieved through the sports. My family, well, is a diabetic child. And he was the best friend to Sebastian. If anybody knows Sebastian Justinian, I think everyone in the city of Linden knows who he is now. He's one of the victims of the family that we lost in February. My child was best friends with him because they share many things. One of them was diabetic. They were, they attended same class. They sat next to each other because the Linden school program wanted to, to take care of them properly, have, have somebody watching after them. So they have to share the same classroom. They have to go to the nurse before lunch together. They have to be this means at the same time. So being the only two child with diabetic makes them unique and they have a unique bonding. And after the tragedy, he came home. Well, I came home. He was sitting at home. He couldn't even talk. That very same day, that morning, I suspect, but I couldn't prove it, you know, he was probably talking to him on the computer, playing video games. And the communication with him and me as a father, I'm not saying that it's broken, but he's suffering. Why? Because you never expect a loving father to do something like that to his family. You never expect a tragedy like that. I have to give him many explanations. I had to give him many speeches for me to create a link again of that bond among me being a father to him. Assuring him that what happened here in Linden and that house will never happen in our family. And that was something that was very out of the ordinary, very, very bad to say that. That was something nobody can explain. So suffering from this tragedy, we have no look for any help because we are trying to deal without a home. And then the doors are opening to us to be out on a field, to play sports, to be out, to live life, to enjoy life as it is, or being close by telling you cannot play. And it's not about a talent because we are not building a team here for the Olympics. We are not building a team here to go and play on other schools, to beat all of the other kids. When we play sports here, we play it for the fun of the game and to build a character and to develop the kids, to see what they're gonna make in life, not to tell them you can't now. So with this story, I'll let you, with, with the story that I'll tell you, I'll leave you with the answer, I mean, with a question. Is it fair for us to tell the kids not to play the sports that they love? Is it fair for us to tell them, you know, stay at home, sit on a computer and don't enjoy life? The program that we have should be available to everyone. Unfortunately, from my experience, it is not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Claudia Dolan, 1309 Thomas Ave. As we wrap up Autism Acceptance Month, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge our amazing special education teachers, power professionals, and aides within the district who work tirelessly to provide for our students day in and day out. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm still Rob Mangell. As Dr. Tomasek closed out his superintendent's report, I heard Dr. Berghammer say that there are wonderful things happening in Linden. And truthfully, I could not agree more. What's important to keep in mind is that these wonderful things happen because of the large, happen in large part because of the folks who work in our buildings. Our staff are incredibly committed and dedicated to the betterment of our community. As a union leader, much to my chagrin, they show up early, they stay late, they build programs for our students. We have students learning new skills, playing new games, growing as young people, thanks to our staff. As the board continues to make decisions that will impact this district in both the short and long term, I hope that you all keep the needs of the staff in focus. We want to keep making the wonderful things happen for our students. And I cannot stress enough, it's important that our needs are met too. Thank you.
No one else? Is there anyone online? Okay. So I guess we meet, we come to the next agenda item, new and unfinished business.
When we closed last month, we spoke about the dress code. Thank you for the policy. I believe the policy is sufficient to where we want to be. So I believe we should be enforcing that policy. That's my personal opinion because I read it through and everything. It's in the policy. It's in the policy, but it looks like we have lacked so of that policy. So I believe we should just enforce the policy and not bring school uniforms unless it gets to that point that we need school uniforms again. And give everybody the freedom on what they want to wear, but in a respectable manner.
The policy is quite specific on what isn't allowed, and I've reinforced that with the school principals. So obviously, if it continues to not be enforced, then we'll take further actions to bring it into compliance.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? I would like to ask a question from your business regarding our CTE program.
Yes, ma'am. Question?
About how is it going? I know we were planning to possibly get some programs going for our next school year to introduce CTE.
Yes, I don't know that we were ready for next school year. These things take quite a bit of time. We did have one initiative that we were looking at in particular, but it just in general, we've reassigned the supervisors of the CTE programs. We did a little bit of juggling in the staff to have a different leadership, leadership that made more sense, whereas before the CTE programs were sitting as an additional duty to a core director. We now have it in a better place, I believe. And then the initiative that came through that was really quite intriguing was the state was trying to promote a CTE and supply, a supply train or supply modes. So of course, it comes with a particular teacher code that needs to teach it, and we just don't invent a CTE because a true CTE has to have 10 credits over three-year period, needs a room, needs supplies, needs to be, we need to know that people are going to take this if we offer it. And then, so it's not an instantaneous thing, but I think that clearly we have our eye on our CTE offerings to modernize them and make them more appropriate to the jobs that our students now may be facing in their work life. So it's certainly something that's under review in the short and the long term.
Thank you.
I have one. Dr. Tomasek, can you tell us if, for instance, the baseball, if it's a tryout or do all of the children get to play?
Yes, I made a note here on this comment. I did not know of this situation previously. So rather than speaking off the cuff and getting something wrong, I have a note to myself to get to the athletic director and with the school principal and get to, so that I can brief you back as to what the procedures are and how it's followed. And also, I certainly would want to do personal information in public, but we will definitely be in contact with Dad and get more direct information as to what occurred in this situation. I'll be briefing the board.
Thank you, Dr. Tomasek. Thank you.
I also want to add, what type of communication we get from PAL? Because after they said the baseball season was open, signups were out, I didn't see too much communication come out, and now the season is canceled for the residents of Linden, so the kids cannot play. They have no baseball this summer at all.
With PAL?
With PAL.
Yes. I don't have any, I know that we, just like we do with Pop Warner and those traditional Linden programs that are essentially our own people and our own kids, even though it's not our organization, will help promote their events, where there's lawn signs you see at the schools. But I haven't myself talked to the boards of those issues, but I can. I'll add that question to the athletic director who keeps a much closer connection to it. So it's in particular what happened with the baseball season?
Yes, because now, I still haven't gotten notice that it was canceled, and I'm one of the coaches. But they did say that not enough kids signed up this year. So not enough kids signed up, that means that's no communication. That's the way I look at it because I believe there's kids out there that would like to play the sport, and there's got to be better communication for us to get them signed up.
I'll get back right after.
I, the young lady who spoke about her childhood special needs and the fact that she's concerned about, you know, inability possibly to de-escalate. I know that this may not be the right place for this conversation because I do not know much about it, but I know that as a mother with a special needs child, I face this situation with my daughter in school, who when she has an outburst, her de-escalation, in my opinion, is not handled in the way I, I think it should be handled. Do you have any comments?
Well, we'll certainly, again, that wouldn't be anything that I want to bring out of the parent and public, but we'll certainly follow up with the parent to see if she had something in particular in mind and a particular location and a particular instance. We certainly do, do training on, across the board in things like how to de-escalate without causing physical harm or, so I don't want to leave the impression that we don't, that we're deficient in this area, but many times there's a particular issue, we're going to find out what it is and get to the bottom of it. But once again, this is the first I've heard of it. So we are available. I mean, we have phones. If there's a concern, we meet with people. I don't want the public to think they have to wait to a board meeting to get service. And if somebody's pushing them off and not responding, I need to know that as well. But we'll definitely take the information that we had on the sign-in sheet and have a conversation with mom to get to the bottom of that.
Thank you. Any other questions? I guess we move to the next agenda item, board member comments. Ms. Pino, could you start us off?
Really? I'm under the weather. I'm not feeling too good this evening. But I just want to say good evening, everyone. It's nice seeing everybody. Thank you for coming, and we want the chairs to still be filled. And you know, I talk a lot. I have a big speech, but tonight, I'm not feeling too good, so please forgive me. But next month, you're going to get it from me. Okay? But thank you all and congratulations, Ms. King. You know, it's a lot going on out here, and people think, parents think, teachers think that we don't care, but you're sadly mistaken. We care. I think we care a little bit too much, but it's okay because we bring something to us. We take care of it. You may not like it, but you get an answer, and we take care of it. No questions asked, you get your answer. So give us the benefit of the doubt because we care. That's all I'm going to say tonight because I really don't feel well. But thank you, everybody, for coming out. And one more thing, Dr. Tomasek, thank you. You always email us. You let us know what's going on. Ms. Perkins, thank you very much. Oliver, you do the same thing. Thank you. I appreciate it so much. Thank you very much. And everybody, have a good evening, okay? It will be longer next month, okay? I just don't feel good tonight. Thank you.
So then I'll take some of your time, I guess.
Take my time. You said I talked too much.
Because I have quite a bit here. First and foremost, my condolences, as always, goes out to the family members that lost somebody. It's never easy when you lose somebody, especially after many years. So condolences and prayers to the families. Also, congratulations to our retirees, whether they wanted to retire or not, still congratulations. Thank you for your service. It's very well appreciated. Okay, I have another. And coming up, May 8th through May 12th, National Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank you guys in advance. I thank you guys all the time because you go above and beyond on what you do. And to the young lady that did come up, I was holding my tears because I felt her pain also, but in the same token, she's special because when a parent has a child like that, that's a special needs child better yet, it's special. You are a teacher. You are a mother. You are a friend. You understand your child all the way through, and don't underestimate the power that you have and what you're showing them, what you're teaching them to go through life, especially that they have special needs. You are that special person. You are that angel to them that was sent to them, or they were given to you for a reason. Take it and run with it because nobody's going to be more special than you. Okay? And I think that's all I had. It's not that much either, so. But, and all the teachers, once again, I thank you. The administrators, thank you for the communication that we are getting. It's all about communication. It makes our decisions easier, and when we go behind closed doors, we're there, we are you. We may not see eye to eye, but we come out strong as one, and we're trying to make the best decisions. We've done decisions from the past that are coming out now that are still haunting us, but we're still correcting what we've done in the past. If we did something wrong, we will fix it. We learn from our mistakes. We're human, so we're going to keep on moving. And we're here to support you guys, here to support everybody also, and I'm hoping to continue. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by saying my condolences to families who have lost our two previous employees in the district. Congratulations to the retirees. Thank you for your service, as always. And congratulations to our music department and to those involved in the award of being Apple Distinguished Educators. To the father who courageously informed us of your situation, I hope your child is able to get through this hard time. And the autism is near and dear to my heart. Just thank you for all of those involved.
Good evening. Then thank you also. I thank you for being here. I would like to also give my condolences to Christine Herbert and Kathleen Riley. It's always hard to, each month when we come up here and we see that there are names on this part of the agenda, so you have our condolences here. And congratulations on the retirees. I can't wait to meet you there. Congratulations, and thank you for the Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you, teachers. It's an awesome, awesome job, and I know that you are wonderful human beings to get up every single day and go to this building to teach our children, six, over 6,000 children. That's a lot, and it is an awesome responsibility. And Kim, thank you for your story before. I don't want to go off of teacher appreciation. We've been here now, like, two and a half years or so now, and it's not very often that we get such a touching story, and it was touching. Thank you for never giving up and for not just showing the kids, but for all of us because we all, no matter how old we get, need to hear this. Iron sharpens iron. So thank you for everything that you do. Thank you. Let me go back to my notes here. I want to say thank you to the teacher, Beverly Brewster, for the book. That's amazing. It's something that needs to be talked about. It's amazing. Thank you for doing this and bringing it to us so that we can look at it. Do you want these back?
No. I would like you to consider having it in the curriculum, so I'd like you to look at it.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, and happy Teacher Appreciation Week coming. Thank you. Thank you. I would also like to say thank you to Dr. Tomasek. I always forget Dr. Tomasek because he's there every day. To me, I look at his emails every day, communicates so well, and it is so, I appreciate it so much, you have no idea. I am so grateful to have Dr. Tomasek join us here again in Linden. He came in here and he straightened a lot of stuff up, and we couldn't have asked for more. You have all of my thanks and all of my admiration. You have taught me things, and I thought I knew everything, but I didn't. I didn't know everything. Thank you, Dr. Tomasek. Thank you for coming here and helping us. We appreciate it. I also would like to thank all the administration because they also communicate, all of them, everybody. Thank you. Thank you so much for all that you do and all that you bring. Let me see. Let me go down the list here. I have this huge list. Mr., sir, sir, I always say it wrong, and I'm sorry, John. Thank you for that presentation, for working so hard on this budget. Not only did, with the help, I know with help, but you're, you're our budget guy, and you really nailed it. You hit it out of the park with this budget, and we, Linden, will be forever grateful. I don't think that I have seen, rarely seen, a city go backward, go downward on budget. It usually is always, you know, it's always raised, two, three, four, sometimes I see it like 6% and I'm like, whoa, what are they doing over there? Thank you for your hard work. Thank you. Let me see here. Oh, and thank you for the bridge, for the discussion of the bridge and making things possible. That wasn't possible before because we had this conversation before, and it wasn't possible, but it is possible. So it looks very good. So not only are you bringing down the budget, you're looking at things that need to be done, the air conditioning, this, all these huge, huge check marks that we had a list, we had a list. And I'm looking at, Dr. Tomasek came here and John came here, and we, we can't complain. We are so grateful. I'm going to continue now. I know I have thank yous forever, but I thank you, all of you. I want to thank Dr. Berghammer for coming up with the graduation yearbook idea, and our IT teacher and students are putting it together amazingly, amazingly, and very quickly as, as I understand. So I just want to shout out to all of the IT teachers and, and students who are helping put this great thing together. It's going to be awesome to see everybody on a big, huge screen at graduation. That's going to be awesome. And Brianna Taylor, I didn't speak to her last time. I don't see her, but I, she is such a great person. Thank you. Thank you, Brianna Taylor, for having such a huge heart and, and doing something for other people. You rarely see it. So thank you for going out of your way and opening up your heart to students so that you can give them a better choice, a better option, something that is safe and that creates an atmosphere of togetherness and spirit. I appreciate you, and I forgot to mention you last time, but I am not forgetting you this time, and I won't forget you again. So thank you for going through all that extra work and, and really pulling it together and pulling it through. You are an inspiration to our young, our young people that will see you and will have it in their heart to do the same thing. So thank you for your extra time and your extra work with that. You are appreciated. Let's see here. I'll stop for now. I'll stop and let somebody else speak. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to extend my condolences.
First and foremost, I would like to extend my condolences to Christine Herbert and Catherine Ri, Catherine, Catherine, sorry, Catherine Riley. Ms. Herbert was my second grade teacher, and I always remember going and having story time and her giving us pirate booties, so she will definitely be missed. It was definitely something memorable with my education in Linden Public School Systems. Also, congratulations to all the retirees. I know you guys are looking forward to enjoying it and getting to spend time with your family and just having some leisure time to relax. Also, Ms. Long, it's no surprise that someone acknowledged how amazing you are, because she was also one of my favorite teachers. I always remember just walking into her classroom and her being so enthusiastic to be there and to make the class just such a memorable moment. So just, I'm not surprised that someone came to give Ms. Long her accolades, because they're well deserved. I also want to give a big shout out to the girls softball team. It was also mentioned by our PTA president and vice president, but just congratulations to the girls for raising the most amount of money. They are so persistent and dedicated, and I really do love our girls softball team. I'm actually leaving work early so I can attend the senior night, so I'm really looking forward to that. Really proud of our girls. Also, would like to just acknowledge the PTA for putting together the Tricky Tray. I know the amount of hard work that you guys put into this, and we just thank your efforts. Thank you for your efforts. The color run also last week was super successful, so thank you to the Mayor's Youth Commission. I did see a lot of familiar faces, but I'm looking forward to seeing more at future events, because Project Graduation is something that's really important for our youth to make sure that they're not getting into anything that could be negative or dangerous after graduation. I would also like to, in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, which is not yet, I would like to just thank our teachers and staff, because today was Bring Your Child to Work Day, and I had to coordinate it from my job, and there were 16 kids in our office, and I can only imagine what you guys do on your day to day, having that many students in your classroom. So definitely a big shout out to you guys. A big shout out to our Apple Distinguished Educators, Mrs. King and Mr. Walker. Your story definitely made me tear up, Ms. King, and just thank you for all that you do. And Mr. Walker, another one of my favorite teachers in Linden Public School System. Let me just make sure, I don't want to miss anything. I also would like to acknowledge the comments made by some of the parents that were, that were here tonight. You guys having the courage to come up here and speak to the board and express your concerns definitely means a lot. Sports was a huge outlet for me, and I also have family members that are on the spectrum, so it's just important to hear your concerns. And I also want to give a big shout out to Brianna Taylor. She's so amazing. She had, she's implementing the soccer program, and she actually had two days on the 19th and the 20th where she had children come out to learn more about her soccer program. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to you for actually being a part of the change, not just talking about it, but actually implementing it and finding ways to, you know, create positive programs for our students. Just, I'm very proud to be an LHS alum with you, so thank you for that. She also showed up to the color run to pass out flyers. That's dedication, not only, you know, having a program, but actually showing up to other events to educate and inform the parents. That's just like commendable, so big shout out to you. And then I also want to just thank our administration and the board, having another year of reduced taxes. As Jennifer mentioned, it's, it's challenging to find a city that's not only not raising taxes, but also lowering taxes, so I just want to give everybody a big pat on the back. I know that a lot of that hard work was not done while I was here, but I hope that we can continue to do that, and I hope that I can continue to be a part of that change. So thank you. And I'll stop, because I'm sure you guys would like to go home to your families and eat dinner if you have not already. So thank you.
Okay. Hello, all. I would like to start off by congratulating the principal of school number 10, David Walker, and the elementary technology teacher, Kim Kafalas, on being selected to join the Apple Distinguished Educator Class of 2023. There were only four recipients in New Jersey receiving this prestigious honor for the class of 2023. And Ms. Kafalas, thank you for sharing your, your encouraging story. Last week, board member Ms. Saskia Carrillo and I attended the annual Navy Junior ROTC inspection at Linden High School. Special thanks to the guest speakers, the Honorable Mayor Derek Armstead, Superintendent Dr. Rocco Tomazik, Principal of the High School, Mr. Coontz, and Commander Boyd Decker for the invitation. The performances that the ROTC cadets displayed was outstanding. I saw how proud the parents were and what an honor it was to be a part of this special day. The Linden High School ROTC unit was recognized and honored as a distinguished unit, which it had been 13 years since the last Merit Ribbon Award. I would also like to congratulate the Linden High School Girls Softball Team for raising the highest amount in the county for the Autism Awareness Cause. Thank you for including board members and allowing us to participate. I would also like to thank Beverly Brewster for the book. I think it's a good way of teaching young children about gun violence. I would also like to thank John Serapiglia for the budget presentation today. Last weekend, board member Ms. Brianna Armstead and I participated in Linden's first color run. The Mayor's Youth Scholarship Fundraising Committee organized the event in order to raise funds for seniors of Linden High School. The funds that were raised will go towards scholarships and Project Graduation. Special thanks to Mayor Derek Armstead, the Mayor's Youth Scholarship Committee Chairwoman, Ms. Dani Orlean, Linden High School Principal, Mr. Coontz, the LEA, representatives, the ROTC students, Linden Fire and Police Department, Buildings and Grounds, and the donors. The event was a success, and we had a fun time as a community as well. Let me see, state tests, state testing will start May 1st, and I would like to wish the students all the best. Please make sure to study, get plenty of rest, and eat a good balanced breakfast in preparation for the exams. Dr. B, you had mentioned about introducing separate teams for special needs students, and I agree with it. As a mother of a special needs child, I had my son on a baseball team. He was about eight years old at the time. Another player made a derogatory comment about him. I decided to pull him off the field, and he was, he has not played since that day. So that's why I agree with having special needs as a, as a separate team. That's all I have for now, and I wish everyone a good night.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I'd like to take a moment to thank the district for presenting us and walking us through the 2023, 2024 budget. The allocation of funds are addressing key issues such as expanding the ESL program and lowering taxes for our residents, and I think that's such a great step in pushing our district forward. I'd also like to congratulate our award distinguished educators, Mr. Walker and Mrs. Kafalas. You truly, truly, you truly deserve this accolade, Mrs. Kafalas. You do so much for our district, and we truly appreciate all of your hard work. I'd also like to congratulate the girls softball team for setting the true example and raising funds for autism awareness. We thank you so much for that. I'd also like to wish our students good luck next month on all of your state exams, as well as wishing our teachers a happy Appreciation Week. I'd like to also thank all of the attendees here who came up and gave public comments. It was different this evening. We heard two parents share some of their concerns and experiences, and it really shed light to some important issues that will be addressed and responded to. I'd also like to thank Brianna Taylor for coming up and introducing your soccer initiative. I'm not sure if anyone else is aware, but ever since the World Cup, my son has been very interested in soccer more than he has before, and I think a lot of students are as well. I witness it every day after pickup. So thank you for bringing another initiative to pique our students' interest and help them grow. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Brewster for sharing your book with us. Thank you. We truly appreciate it. It's a different approach, one that I haven't seen yet come across our table from somewhat, from a teacher here. So thank you so much. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
This was a different night, very, very emotional, and I don't want to keep you guys here any longer. I just want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. I thank the parents, I thank the students, I thank the contributors, I thank the administrators, the teachers. I know that sometimes it may appear that we board members just sit in judgment, but we do care. We know that we, we are faced here making, to make decisions. Sometimes we get it right. Sometimes we get it wrong, but we do care what happens in our district. We care about each and every one of the students, parent, and taxpayers. Once again, I want to thank you for coming, and have a blessed evening, and go home tonight and kiss your children and tell them you love them. I guess we should adjourn now?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you for coming. What call is here? Forget it. Sorry, what call?
Motion to adjourn. Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Sintron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.